Fantastic. Hey, welcome everybody here tonight for Milpitas Regular City Council Meeting here in the month of October. So happy to get back to work and as the days get shorter and the light from the sun isn't as abundant, we continue to gather. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll go to our city clerk Suzanne Guzzetta for the roll call, please.
Councilmember Chua.
Get your microphone here.
Here. Councilmember Dominguez.
Present.
Councilmember Fan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Montana. Mayor Tran.
And I'm here. Thank you very much. And we anticipate our wonderful Vice Mayor arriving any moment. Certainly busy times. Next up on the agenda, folks, if it's your first city council meeting, we do have an agenda and I think they're printed here in the back. You can pick one up and follow along on the paper also here in these chambers. But if it's not your first city council meeting, welcome back. And next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And next on the agenda is the invocation. Tonight's invocation is presented by Councilmember Evelyn Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I thought to ask to replay the invocation that was done by Saint John the Baptist School Choir sometime in November because of the violence around us, a number of global natural disasters and also this this election words are being exchanged hurting people. I thought we pause and hear the song of these children singing through their innocence and pure hearts. Here is Saint John the Baptist School Choir with Make Me A Channel Of Your Peace.
Make me a channel of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me bring your love. Where there is injury, your heart will more. And where there's doubt, true faith in you. Make me a channel of your peace. Where there's despair and laughter, let me bring hope. Where there is darkness, only light. And where there's sadness, ever joy. Oh, master, ground that I may never see. So much to be consoled as to console. To be understood as to understand. To be loved as to love with all my soul. Make me a channel of your peace. It is imparting that we are hard. And give it now for songs that we receive. And denying that we're born to eternal life. Oh, master, ground that I may never see. So much to be consoled as to console. To be understood as to understand. To be loved as to love with all my soul. Make me a channel of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me bring your love. Where there is injury, your heart will more. And where there's doubt, true faith in you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Sister Norrie and Principal Mr. Brazil. Thank you.
That was very sweet. I don't think I've ever heard these chambers with such angelic sounds as we just heard. Thank you very much, Councilmember Chua, and I'll come down here for a few proclamations. Okay, great. Hey. Happy everybody's here tonight. I think a year or so ago, it was hard to look out to this audience and actually see persons. And so it means a lot that each one of you are here tonight. We do have a sort of a relatively short agenda, but I know folks are here to be a part of the public forum. So just a heads up, three minutes tonight. I don't think that's happened all year. So three minutes tonight per person after these proclamations. I got about four proclamations here tonight. And thanks, folks, for tuning in on youtube.com or Facebook livestream. It's always great to have an audience for the great work our city does. First proclamation, we're going to go ahead and proclaim a fire prevention week here in the city of Milpitas. And that'll be October 9th to the 15th. The week of October 9th is observed as Fire Prevention Week each year in commemoration of the great Chicago fire tragedy. In 2022, the National Fire Protection Association observed the 100th anniversary of Fire Prevention Week. The theme for this year's Fire Prevention Week is Fire Won't Wait. Plan Your Escape. Reminding the community of the importance of having a home fire escape plan. We do have a fire prevention department here in the city, actually here in this building on the first floor, sort of where the restrooms are, but there's the Fire Prevention Department and they do a lot of great work. So I want to recognize fire prevention folks on the first floor. Therefore, I, Mayor Rich Tran, on behalf of the City Council, proclaim October 9th to the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week in the land of cornfields where we call home for the folks here and watching on TV. Next proclamation is for Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is October the 10th, 2022. October the 10th is celebrated as Indigenous Peoples' Day. It honors the vibrant and diverse cultures of the people indigenous to North America here in the United States. Their sacrifices and their contributions in public service, entrepreneurship, scholarship, the arts and countless other fields. Therefore, I, Mayor Rich Tran, on behalf of the City Council, proclaim October the 10th of this year as Indigenous Peoples' Day here in the city of Milpitas. Okay, I see we have some guests here as well. And this proclamation is for Hindu Heritage Month. Hinduism is the third largest religion in the world. And Hindu Americans have greatly enriched our local community. The month of October is recognized as Hindu Heritage Month, honoring the innumerable contributions of the Hindi American community. We do have a proclamation here. So therefore, I, Mayor Rich Tran, on behalf of the City Council, proclaim the month of October 2022 as Hindu Heritage Month in the city of Milpitas. I do have a copy here. I want you to come on up here. Let's welcome our guests.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's a privilege on behalf of the Hindu American Foundation and the broader Hindu American community to accept this proclamation. We appreciate the diversity of Milpitas and recognizing the contributions of the Hindu American community. This initiative was started back in 2013 at the state level in California and since then has grown. And it goes a long way to educating our community here in Milpitas and the broader Bay Area about Hindu Americans, what we believe in and what our contributions are. So thank you again very much, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Appreciate it.
Okay, these are always the fun parts of the meeting where we can just recognize milestones and community members and special days, special months, proclamations and commendations. And it's really under the umbrella of presentations and it's always a joyous time to show how vibrant our community is. Last proclamation I have is the California Clean Air Day, October 5th, 2022. And I always think it's unfortunate we have to celebrate the clean air. It used to be, you know, growing up here is like, you know, we go up in the hills and we look over the valley. It was clear every day, a little less clear these days, but you know, maybe someone can buy me a Tesla and I can contribute to the clean air. But it's California Clean Air Day, October 5th, 2022. California Clean Air Day is built on the idea that shared experiences unite people to improve community health by joining together for a unified day of action. October 5th, we observe Clean Air Day and ask the Milpitas community to do their part with actions such as not idling vehicles. I'm not sure too many people are doing that. These days, price of gas, right? I feel like it's gone up. Walking or biking to work and/or school, carpooling and conserving energy, which can directly improve air quality in our region. Therefore, I, Mayor Rich Tran, on behalf of the City Council, proclaim October the 5th, 2022 as Clean Air Day in the city of Milpitas. Okay, there you have it, folks. Those are our proclamations for tonight. And I'm sure we'll have more in a couple of weeks. Okay, next up is the public forum. Welcome once again, folks. Three minutes tonight for all comments. And we'll go ahead and start off the public forum. Those in the audience are on our hybrid style meeting. I do see a virtual raised hand here. If you're on Zoom or you're in person, I want to thank you again for being here. I can't thank you enough. It's three minutes tonight for every comment. And if there's any item not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to comment. Now, the city councilor myself may not be able to have a discussion about it tonight, but perhaps we'll take what we hear and agendize it for a future meeting agenda. So come on up. Welcome. Come on down. Very easy process. Come on up. Each person, three minutes. Okay, hey, welcome.
Hello. My name is Barbara Curry and with me is my granddaughter Laura. I've been a city crossing guard for over 10 years. There's a proposal that suggests outsourcing us. We are here to say, keep us with the city of Milpitas. Crossing guards are needed and we are appreciated by the kids and parents we serve. We want nothing more but to stay with the city. To think we are expendable like this, how we put up, how we put ourselves on the line every day. We are here to let you know we want to stay. The proposal outsourced the crossing guards was disappointing to hear. It is now in your hands, Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Dani Alexa. I've lived in Milpitas for 26 years. I was crossing guard for almost seven years. It was a blessing and a privilege to serve. I'm really hoping you don't outsource the crossing guards because the people we work for, they become family. We know everything about them. I think that maybe you could look at competitive wages to attract people. When you do recruitment, I notice it's the police officers that go out and recruit. Why not have a crossing guard go out? They know the job really well and they'll really tell people with enthusiasm about it. Also, their applications, the crossing guard bus only gets the written ones, the paper ones, and there aren't many of those around anymore. She didn't know where to get the ones online. And the HR person didn't know how often to send them to her. So there's probably people that want to be a crossing guard and are getting no response. And we do have a shortage. We have outsourced maintenance before and it was a mess. So I hope when you go to vote, you remember Milpitas families come first and please don't outsource them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Voltaire Montemeyer of Milpitas. Yeah, the presentation's great. I'm touched. On the fire prevention, I would say prevent first before we're gonna put out the fire is big problem. The clean air, it should be natural as much as possible. But yeah, we have smoke sometimes. I'm touched also with the Hindu American brothers and sisters. Yeah, they're helping a lot in our community. The indigenous peoples, yeah, we care. I don't want to mention we are spoiling them. But at least if we guide them, then they will eventually get rehabilitated and will help the community also. The crossing guards, I apologize this afternoon. I jaywalk. I wasn't, I wasn't there. Was that you? Yeah, I jaywalked. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I don't know. I it's, I parked my campaign car somewhere and then I have to pick up the people delivering my flyers. And then I shortcut. I didn't touch the crossing markers. Sorry. Anyway, yeah. Thanks to the city. Thanks to the City Council members. You are doing great. It's very peaceful out there. In other words, even though I would say it's not easy to be candidates or candidates. Yeah. But at least we are united. We help each other. We cheer for the the luck of every one of us. So thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Really appreciate everybody's comments so far. Anybody else in the chamber that would like to speak for this public forum, now's the time. But if you're here for an agenda item, that will be heard pretty soon. So that would be a great time to comment for an agenda item if you're here for that. But if not, it's the public forum, looking around the chamber, looking around the chamber, looking twice to my left, to my right. Okay, we'll go to the Zoom. It's the public comment, pardon me, the public forum comments on the Zoom. First up with the virtual raised hand, we have Mary Beth Baikowski. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Mary Beth. I'm an outreach analyst in the Department of Insurance, also known as CDI. I'm here to give you a quick update on what we have been doing for your constituents. Since 2019, we've met with more than 25,000 people in 40 counties and we've held 60 events to specifically hear concerns around both availability and the affordability of homeowners insurance. In January of 2022, Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara and the state's emergency response and readiness agencies, they came together and created what CDI calls the Safer From Wildfires framework. So now all these agencies have a very consistent approach of reducing risk with a list of achievable, certifiable and effective actions to help make the existing homes and businesses safer from wildfires. The ultimate goal is protecting the consumers by reducing the risk in their communities. So this ground-up approach for wildfire resilience has three layers of protection. Here at CDI, we call it the 123 Plan. Protect your structure, protect your immediate surroundings and protect the community. I won't go into detail about all these actions because I know your local fire agencies, they do a great job of keeping you informed of the action items for you. Keep everything safe. But we believe involving your entire community to prevent wildfires from catching and spreading in the neighborhood is the most important. This includes things like enhanced infrastructure and programs like Firewise. And we have an entire list of actions you can take on our website, insurance.ca.gov. So by making homes and businesses safer, we can bring the risks down and bring the costs down as well. The commissioner's actions are focused on safety and transparency. And his new regulations do this in three ways. Here's requiring the insurance companies to incorporate the framework into their pricing. So insurance companies will have to submit new rate filings that recognize these safety actions. Consumers will receive their property's wildlife risk score and the reasons for it. In the past, this information was considered proprietary and CDI will have oversight. And consumers will be able to appeal their risk score when they have done the work. So public input, that was critical to ensure that we were on the right track. We held a hearing on April 13th that accepted public comments. CDI has evaluated all that input and has submitted new regulations to the Office of Administrative Law. And we expect to have those new regulations any day now and the new rate filings by January of 2023. And as a reminder, we are California's largest consumer protection agency. You can call us at any time with insurance questions. We have a hotline with a two-minute callback average. That number is 800-927-4357. And our website is insurance.ca.gov. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for being with us. And next up, we have Indrajit Mundra. We'll get your microphone unmuted on the Zoom. Folks watching, it's a hybrid meeting. We got folks here in person. And then, Indrajit Mundra.
I'm back. Sorry. So Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, community members. I'm Indrajit Mundra, Vice President of the Milpitas Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. It is great to inform you about the events the chamber is bringing to you in the near future and about the new chamber team. In the last several weeks, the chamber opened up the board for election. 13 chamber members applied and 12 qualified to be on the board. The term limits will now be voted on by the chamber membership. And then tasks will be assigned to each board member after that. The chamber also brings you the awards banquet on October 21st. It will be at the Sinester Silicon Valley. The next mixer is at Advantage Moving and Storage on October 20th. On November 17th, the mixer will be at Westmont Senior Living. Please sign up on the chamber website. Thank you.
And next up, we have Barbara Jo Navarro.
I'm sorry. My grandson pushed the button. I really didn't want to say anything.
Well, let's hear what he has to say.
Nothing. He can't even talk. So my apologies, but we're looking forward to the consent C7 being approved. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. That's cute. Okay, any further public comments during this forum for the public? Okay, I don't see any further requests on the Zoom. So that's it for public forum. I just want to say I'm happy to have a peaceful public forum. And all around this time on election years, we get a lot of different comments. Many not too bright. And so very pleased for tonight. Thank you, everybody, for the good vibes. Next up is the announcements and feature agenda items. We'll go to our city manager, Steve McHarris.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Members of the council, I have no announcements this evening.
Thank you very much. And we'll bring it over this way. Any requests from my colleagues, announcements and feature agenda items? We'll go to Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I just want to to thank the Milpitas PD for the PSA on package staff. Those are really good tips. They have seven tips. So please refer to our city's website. Number two, thank you to staff for the wonderful celebration of the Filipino-American history event last Saturday. And I want to just do a shout out to the executive team, Steve Ashwini, Walter, and special kudos to Renee and Charmaine and Rochelle. Thank you all so much. It was great. Everybody loved it. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Are any further requests? It's time for the announcements and feature agenda items. We'll go to Councilmember Fan.
Yeah, I also want to echo the remarks by my colleague and give a special shout out to our Police Department, particularly Detective John Lamb, who did an incredible job in playing a huge role in identifying a chain snatch event. And so the technology that we've integrated and invested in, combined with the diligence of our team at PD, we were able to, you know, catch the bad guys. So thank you. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is I just wanted to congratulate our city clerk Suzanne Guzzetta on her permanent appointment as city clerk. Welcome officially to the team and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Okay, anybody else, announcements and feature agenda items? Okay, seeing no requests. Okay, we'll move on to announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. We'll go to our city attorney, Michael Motalapasi.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
And we'll go down the line here. Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Dominguez.
None.
Councilmember Fan. Councilmember Fan.
None.
Vice Mayor, Montana.
None.
And myself is a none, Michael.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, reflect no reported conflict. We'll also ask Mayor Tran and members of the Milpitas City Council, please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
We'll go to Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Dominguez.
None.
Councilmember Fan.
None.
Vice Mayor, Montana.
None.
And myself is a none.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and we'll go to the city code, uh, pardon me, the city council code of conduct. I'll go ahead and read it. Be respectful and courteous, model civility, avoid surprises, praise publicly and criticize privately, focus on the issue, not the person, refrain from using electronic devices while on the council days. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to legit items, separate governing and campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with the code of conduct. Moving on here to the approval of the agenda. Not the consent calendar, the approval of the agenda. I'll move to approve the agenda. Need a second.
Second.
We got a second from Councilmember Chua. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. Moving on to consent calendar. Any request?
Mayor, I just wanted to announce that there was a revised staff report from item C9 that revised the list of attachments in the report.
Thank you very much. Very sharp. Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Uh, the consent calendar is approved. Thank you. Okay. And what may be the shortest city council agenda I've ever been a part of? That's not a complaint. Uh, we'll go to item number 13. Proposed revisions to the city council policy for donations for city parks and recreation and community services programs. We'll go to our Director of Recreation and Community Services, Renee Lorenson.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Uh, we're gonna pull up some slides for you. Thank you. All right, so, uh, next, uh, tonight, we're gonna be going over some proposed revisions to the city council's policy for donations and, uh, to city parks and recreation and community services programs. Next slide. So to give you a little bit of background, on March 10th, 2013, the city council adopted a policy and procedure for donations to the city Milpitas parks and for recreation programs. As part of the adoption of your fiscal year 2122 operating budget, the council approves updated budget guidelines, which state in part that the city manager is authorized to accept grants or donations up to and including $100,000, as long as no matching funds are required and the departments do not require additional funding for any ongoing maintenance or future replacement costs. So tonight, staff is recommending changes to the draft, uh, to the donation policy to better align it with the approved budget guidelines regarding the acceptance of grants and donations, and to present it in the new city council policy format. And full disclosure, you will hear me repeat through the presentation about the city manager authorization level, um, and that is really just because this is, uh, the largest update to the policy, and it allows for better efficiency in accepting donations, while also maintaining the limited authority of the city manager as, uh, determined by the city council. Next slide. Just a quick summary, uh, including with the background. So the draft policy update continues to cover donations such as memorial benches, historical items, or monetary donations prescribed in a will or a trust. Uh, staff solicited sponsorships for events and programs such as our Fourth of July fireworks program events or the community garden, for an example. Those are still going to be processed in accordance with the city's budget guidelines and related policies. Next slide. So the purpose of the policy remains the same, and that's to establish the guidelines, criteria and processes for monetary and non-monetary donations, including donations and memoriam of an individual to the city's parks and/or Recreation and Community Services Department, uh, and programs, rather. The policy clarifies that the city has the sole authority, and the city council shall have the final authority to approve donations, except for the authority that you've granted to the city manager, which is up to $100,000. The policy maintains that the city reserves the right to recognize the donors, or in the cases of memorial gifts, an individual, a named individual in any manner the city chooses, and those making the donations don't have the right to control or dictate the way that the city, uh, recognizes those donations. Next slide. Uh, an update to the policy that isn't in the 2013 version is, uh, language that states in the event the city chooses to recognize a donor or an individual named in a memorial donation, the manner of recognition shall be construed as the city's own speech under the government's speech doctrine, and no open forum shall be created by the city's sole decision to recognize a donor or named individual at a certain location or in a certain manner, and continues to emphasize that the final review and action to accept or decline a donation on behalf of the city in Milpitas is determined by, determined by you, the city council, except for the limited authority granted to the city manager, which is, um, up to $100,000. Um, and the final decision on the recognition is determined also by the city council. Next slide. The updated policy continues to have the Parks Recreation Cultural Resources Commission, uh, continue to make recommendations to city council on donations in value of over $100,000, which don't require matching funds or result in the city incurring maintenance or replacement costs. Uh, donations could be monetary, they can be non-monetary. For example, materials or property or fixtures, and include memorial donations such as contributions of funds in memory of a past loved one, or more commonly seen in the form of memorial benches. Next slide. The policy does call out and describes the process, uh, for making a donation. Um, it requires that the inquiries about monetary donations are directed to the Director of Recreation and Community Services. If the donation is deemed viable, the donors, uh, complete a Parks Recreation Cultural Resources donation form, and upon receipt of the completed form from the director, the proposed donation is placed on, uh, the next appropriate PR CRC agenda. Next slide. For monetary donations up to and including $100,000, which do not require any matching funds or additional funding for ongoing maintenance costs or replacement costs, staff will present an informational item to the Parks and Rec Commission, and the donation will be accepted administratively. The Director of Finance reports quarterly on the acceptance of any grants or donations as part of the quarterly financial status report to the city council. For other monetary donations, the PR CRC shall review the proposed donations, and they provide a recommendation for either accepting or declining the donation, um, directly to the Milpita City Council. Next slide. For non-monetary donations, if they're deemed viable, uh, the donors are asked to fill out the same donation form and submit it to the director. Um, if it's viable, the donation will be accepted by the city manager or their designee, uh, if there are no ongoing maintenance or future replacement costs. If there are ongoing maintenance or replacement costs, the donation will go to the PR CRC for approval for donations with an estimated value of up to and including $25,000. And for donations that have a value of more than $25,000, the donation would go to PR CRC for recommendation for city council final approval. The PR CRC will also receive a quarterly report on accepted non-monetary donations for up to and including $25,000 at a regularly scheduled meeting. Next slide. On September 12th, 2022, the PR CRC did review the proposed revisions to the donation policy for city parks and recreation community services programs and unanimously recommended for council approval. Uh, and there is no fiscal impact associated with approval of this policy. Next slide. So the recommendation before you tonight is to approve the proposed revisions to the city council policy for donations for city parks and recreation community services programs. So that concludes the presentation, and staff is here to answer any questions.
Excellent presentation. We'll go to public comment, public comment for item number 13, public comment. And we have Mr. Montemor. Come on up.
Yeah, Voltaire Montemur, oh, I'm with the PR CRC. And I, uh, I spoke a couple of times during the meeting. Anyway, I believe it was covered, but I, I thought, um, there may be some special requests. There could be, or there would have been. But I think it stated that it is the city that will choose. So in other words, I'm covered with my comment. My comment was, uh, in between also. I, I don't want to offend anybody. However, the, uh, the donors are that, um, all I want is if possible, if there is a choose or, or special request, uh, placement, wherever. I I just want cemetery, or it's still, still, uh, the choose of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll take any additional comments here in the chamber. Looking to my left, looking to my right, seeing no request for item number 13. We'll go to the Zoom. Any virtual raised hands for item number 13? Looking on the Zoom, looking on the Zoom, no virtual raised hands. That's it for public comment, folks. Um, I'll go ahead and move to approve item number 13. I stayed on the agenda. Councilor Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I have a question for Ms. Lorenson. And, um, I didn't see, it says here donations for city parks and recreation and community services program. When you say community services program, is that the, can you define that for me, please?
So those are programs and services, um, under my department, so it could be seniors, it could be social services and mental health, it could be the theater program, could be any youth or teen program, anything in your repertoire, if you will, um, that we offer to the community.
My question is, uh, I don't know if this is the place for, as you know, I was able to raise $14,000 last, last year for the hotel voucher. But we don't really have a, a formalized way of tracking the, the donations, because I have a hard time, because I did, um, the raising the funds. But after that, I'm no, no longer involved, so I don't know when you received the check or what happened after. So is there a way it should be, should it be part of this then? Shouldn't there be a section here that would say what needs to be done?
Um.
Part of your community service donation?
Yeah, yeah. So when those checks came in, we did, um, take those and approve those with the city's, um, recently adopted budget guidelines for accepting grants and donations. So those did come to city council for, uh, approval and acceptance, so those are now monitored and appropriated in the social services, um, budget function and recreation, community services. So they, yeah, so they are, um, under the threshold of, of the city manager's authority to be administered and um, reserving rooms for, for the unhoused, um, in emergency situations. So, um, we are following those budget guidelines and best practices for, for budgeting, so, um, if there's a desire that that be wrapped up into this, then the city council could definitely ask that it be done. That's fine.
Right, because there is no formalized process for it. That's, that's what I'm looking for. I guess this is the first time that happened, so, so everybody was looking on how to, how to manage that. So I, I, I'm gonna go ahead and through the, through the mayor and, and go to our city attorney. Uh, is her name, Michael? Do we need to include that here?
Well, so if I understood, um, the director correctly, uh, she said that it applies under the grant acceptance and came to council previously.
Let me, uh, if I may interject. If I may, so, uh, I think on the agenda tonight, thank you very much. On the agenda tonight, uh, we're really focused on donations towards the uh, city parks and recreation, community services programs. Uh, and within there, there would be a fund for donations, uh, sort of separately, um, or differently is, uh, the donations for the hotel, um, assistance or voucher program.
Uh huh.
Uh, is my understanding that those donations and those dollars go towards a separate program uh, from the one that we're discussing tonight.
Okay.
Perhaps even in a separate department. I would, um, believe those donations to pay for those hotel rooms for everybody that needs them, right? Which is a great job, by the way. Councilmember Chua, great job.
Yeah.
But that would, I think, go to perhaps the, um, Building Safety and Housing Department, uh, perhaps the housing, uh, area there, or the Milpitas Assistance Program, which is in which department? I don't write that in recreation? Okay.
Uh huh.
Uh, and so, um, if Councilmember Chua is actually on track here, then if it's the same, uh, destination, uh, or department, sure, yeah, formalizing a process.
Right.
Uh, you know, let's go ahead and make that amendment, uh, from you.
Yeah.
But, um, it all comes down to, uh, to the finance department. Let's get the director Lauren Li, perhaps, since we're talking dollars. Hey, Lauren, how you doing?
I'm great. How are you?
Yeah, I used my lifeline there. Um, maybe you can help us, um, or all these checks are coming in. Hopefully not cash, but, um, yeah. How, what's the distinction between donations to the hotel voucher program, thank you, Councilmember Chua, uh, and, uh, what we're looking at tonight on agenda number 13?
We have, I, I think you nailed it when you responded. We have a general policy in the budget policy under budget management where the city council delegates to the city manager the authority for administrative efficiency to receive grants up to $100,000 in that there's no matching funds or ongoing costs. This item tonight is specific to the recreation programs. There are nuances to it, and that's why we're bringing this forward to your attention. However, um, as we're talking about those ho-grat, hotel subsidies, those were processed under the previous pre-existing authorized policy by council.
Yeah.
Okay, great. That is, uh, sufficient, Councilmember Chua.
Um, so if, uh, uh, Mayor Tran, so if I, I think this could happen again with any of the council members. So, a- as long as there is, uh, uh, SOP, uh, standard operating procedure on when a council member was able to, to, to raise some funds, they would, somebody would know what to do with it. Do, do you see what I'm saying? Because Renee and I, we had like a hard time, said, ah, okay, what do we do? I mean, you know? So I, I just want to make sure that there's a way that, uh, any council member can raise funds and know what to do with it in terms of compliance, because I'm afraid that I did the rate, raise the funds, but am I compliant to make sure that I reported it correctly? That's the concern. And that's it. And if there is an in-place procedure, then I'm okay with it, Mayor Tran. Thank you, Lauren, and thank you, Renee.
You're very welcome.
That's a great point. So we'll go to our city manager. What do you recommend, uh, in terms of, uh, the discussion that Councilmember Chua is proposing?
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask either Lauren or, or Renee, I mean, and, yeah, what, I see Lauren ready for this.
Uh, we do have an administrative policy and SOP for the process to receive grants under the city manager threshold, so internal controls are very important to us. So when money comes in, we have a checklist as to what needs to do to ensure that it meets the qualification of the city manager's authority and how we account for those receipts as well.
Excellent. This is so fun. Go to our deputy city manager, Walter Rossman, with the virtual raised hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Walter Rossman, Deputy City Manager. I wonder whether Councilor Chu is referring to any kind of FPPC uh, reporting requirements. Uh, and if, uh, because I think we had conversations about this in the past. And if so, uh, that's definitely something we need to include in our SOPs. Uh, to make sure that uh, we work with the city attorney to address this issue.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, this is great work. Next up, uh. We'll go to Vice Mayor, Montana.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a question on uh. On the hundred thousand dollars. However, I I want to touch on Councilmember Chu's. At wanting to find out about the voucher system, the voucher monies that you receive. I I think probably this this is not the right venue, but the, I think that the MAPS, the Milpitas Assistant Program, the. Housing Department, I think that would be the best. Area that can deal with this or solve some of your questions, you know. That that department would be, and maybe there should be a follow-up on that. Anyway, those are just my recommendations. Um, going back to the um. Item thirteen. I know that the library, JPA, Joint Powers Authority. They have a procedure where uh, if anyone gives over a hundred thousand, they. Receive some type of commendation or some type of uh, recognition. So I would like to recommend in this. Uh, item. Regarding this item, that anyone that. Donates a hundred thousand should be recognized somehow, maybe a plaque or a a brick or something. Uh, in that area that they donate. For example, if they want to donate to senior center. Or senior services, it should go in the senior building. They want to donate to the. Theater, the community center, then it should go to the community center. So anyway, I I'd like. I'd like to recommend that the staff look into. Something like that, that the Joint Powers Authority also does. So that's my recommendation. But overall, this is a great, a great uh. Presentation, just want to add that piece in there. They should be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, along the lines of what Councilmember Chu was saying, I I totally agree with some of the stuff she's talking about. Um. While we have to report it to the FPPC in in when we make a donation request, um, it's not available to the public. But the only thing that I would like to ask staff, um, I don't think it needs to be included in this as a formality, but. Um, maybe if we could include those reports under the government tab on the website portal. In order for individuals to be able to see who are we asking for donations. Um, and how those are coming through. They're already being reported to the FPPC, at least we we need to report them. Um, and so it's just a matter of grabbing the form and posting it on the website. In order, um, just like we do, if we get campaign contributions, that's available for the public. I think it would be only fair. For the public to have access to that additional form, so they could see. Um, the council members um, who are asking for donations, where those donations are coming from and to this. Thank you.
Okay, I will go to Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. When I spoke with the, when I brought this up to the previous uh, city attorney. And the, for this particular funds. He he sent me a a little verbiage that said that. I only need to report it to the city clerk. Hmm, that's, that's the. That was the guidelines that we followed. So I I still, I think we really need to do besides the. Councilmember Dominguez's recommendation, we really need to. To iron or strengthen the verbiage to make sure that we we are in compliance. The. Because it's hard for me to know when the checks came in. And because I have like according to the notes that I got, I have thirty days to report, but I won't know when the checks came in. You see what I'm saying? So we need to tighten that. That's all I'm asking. Thank you, and I think I like what the deputy city manager said, Walter Rossman, about it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Wonderful comments. Wonderful. Okay, any further comments from the council? We already took comments from the public. Uh, our city manager is noting. Uh, some of the. Recommendations. Uh, from my colleagues here on the dais. And I believe we have everything noted. And uh, we'll need a second. We have a second from Councilmember Dominguez. Uh, and we'll go to the vote to one by one. Uh, motion by myself, a second from Councilmember Dominguez. We'll go to Councilmember Chu.
Uh, yes, with the amendments as mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dominguez.
Hi.
Councilmember Fan.
Hi.
Vice Mayor, Montana.
I with the proposed amendments.
Mm-hmm. And myself is an I, the motion is carried, the item is approved. I want to thank city staff for all their hard work on this. And we'll move on to number fourteen. Receive an update on the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And provide direction to staff. That's the city of Milpitas. And we'll go to our assistant city manager, Ash Weenie Cantak.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Ashwini Kantak, Assistant City Manager. I'm joined by Lauren Lai, our Finance Director for this item. We also have Deputy City Manager. Rossman and department heads are leading the various programs that are available to respond to any of your questions. So we're really excited to be here today to provide a quarterly update on the various programs and staff that are funded by the over sixteen point seven million dollars. Uh, in American Rescue Plan Act funding. As you're well aware, with your leadership and great staff work, we have been able to use ARPA funding to provide much needed help to our. Vulnerable residents as well as our local businesses, which were pretty hard hit by the pandemic. And so I will now turn it over to Director Lai to walk you through some key. Activities and status updates since our last discussion on this topic. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. If I may have the next slide, please. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll go over a brief background on ARPA. Give a status update and look forward to engaging with the council and public on these programs. Next slide, please. By way of background, in March of twenty twenty one, the president signed the one point nine trillion dollar package. We received sixteen point seven million in two tranches. Over that period of time, you could see council deliberated on important policy issues. And also gave direction on programs during the budget development process. We tweaked the program a little more. Um, based on the legislation, also early learnings. And here we are, giving you an update since June seventh, the budget development process. Next slide, please. These are the five investment areas, specifically public safety, infrastructure, economic development, community services and technology. We'll unpack each one of these briefly, but this is a nice illustration of the distribution of funds in key investment areas. Next slide, please. This slide now shows it out in the twenty nine programs. Uh, we'll go through each one of this, but this shows the monetary delineation. How much was appropriated in each of the investment areas amongst the programs, how much we've spent to date and the balance. The next slide will show you the second half. Which includes. This slide is Community Services and Economic Vitality. If I may have the next slide, please. The next slide includes Infrastructure, Public Safety and Technology. If I can have the next slide, we'll now go into the investment areas, starting with Community Services. Community Services has two point five million dollars. Next slide. Starting with rent and mortgage relief, a lot of members of the public were hit hard during the pandemic. One point one million dollars is going towards this program. Through a competitive solicitation process, Life Stories was selected to be the program administrator. Contract is currently routing for review and signature. In addition, we have a limited-term staff who has been hired to help with this ARPA program, plus other citywide affordable housing program. In the Utility and Childcare Financial Assistance Program, we have five hundred and seventy five thousand. This is an expansion of our MAPS program for utility. In addition, the planning and development of a new program for childcare subsidies. We've done outreach and enrollment has begun. Disbursements have happened over both programs. That's under the Recreation Department's leadership. Beautify Milpitas is a hundred thousand dollars. Initial kits have been assembled and distributed. We debatement has ninety thousand dollars. Temporary staffing has been hired for this program. Pilot curbside pickup of eighty five thousand in the recent MSI contract agreement. This service has been provided, will be incorporated in the MSI agreement. So that eighty five thousand dollars is still retained here in ARPA. Homeless Outreach and Assessment, council may recall, the direction was to allocate a hundred thousand towards continuing our partnership with the county. For the unhoused services, contract review is in progress right now. Next slide, please. Social Services. We have five hundred thousand dollars funded towards nonprofits that partner with us in focusing on areas of domestic violence. LGBTQ, youth and mental health. You could see there are the agencies that we're working with. The funding and importantly, the outreach and the events that have been held in September and also scheduled for October. Next slide, please. Moving on to Economic Vitality Investment Area, we have four point one million dollars in this area for economic recovery for businesses that suffered in our pandemic. Next slide. Starting with Small Business Assistant Grant, almost one point six million dollars was allocated here. All qualifying small businesses in this program that applied received a grant. Three hundred and forty-three businesses were assisted. The first tranche was two hundred and seventy-six businesses, which received five thousand dollars grant. That was through a lottery. We took the balance of the fund with council direction, was able to recalibrate the money. So then that way. All sixty-seven businesses that didn't receive grants in the first round received some financial support. When we conducted a survey of the businesses, they demonstrated to us that the four top expenditures that were used. Uh, to fund ARPA with was rent and mortgage. Labor or payroll costs. Utilities, equipment and supplies. Really noteworthy when we did the outreach after the allocation were some of the testimonies received. For example, one business said that, um, since they do event and convention signage. We have had a direct impact on the overall sales. And we've had loss of sixty-five to seventy-five percent in revenue due to restrictions. In addition, another business said this grant would be like water to me in the middle of the desert. I will be able to pay for my website update. Store lease, utility bills and PPE supplies. So the small business community in Milpitas definitely appreciated this program. Next slide, please. We also were able to reach out and assist thirteen hotels in Milpitas, providing each of these hotel ten thousand dollar grants. When serving them, the top four use of funds was labor and payroll costs. Utilities, marketing and promotion and COVID safety supplies, which enabled them to provide a clean environment for them to resume businesses and doing. Uh, and providing services to their guests. Next slide, please. In the area of economic vitality, we also have other unique programs. Storefront Improvement Grant of three hundred and sixty-five thousand. That program is currently being marketed right now. It is working in conjunction with the Outdoor Dining Ordinance. That ordinance that is in review right now is going to help with the parking reduction. So once that ordinance goes through the process, we will be able to move much faster and move forward with the storefront improvement grant program. Business Improvement District Assessment. You may recall this program, the first step is to do. A consultation to plan, design and evaluate a BID. The procurement for that consultant is underway now, and we expect to select that consultant by the end of November. Sustainable Neighborhood Program. That program is pending program design and planning. Community Events under the Recreation Program, uh, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The program, uh, events that we have completed so far include Earth Day, Family Cap Out and Lantern Festival. Those are the pictures to the right. Upcoming events include the Art Walk, Dia de los Mortos. Next slide, please. Continuing on with Economic Vitality, we have the accessory dwelling unit, also known as ADU, with nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar allocation. The objective of this program is twofold, is to incentivize new ADUs to create more housing. And also to legalize unpermitted ADUs to address public safety concerns. To date, we've allocated a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar subsidy towards forty-three ADUs with thirteen permits issued. On average, the building fee is about forty-seven hundred dollars. And on average, the units are running about six hundred and seventy-five square feet. Couple of photos there to illustrate some of these ADU units. Next slide, please. In the area of economic vitality, we also have allocations to the Chamber of Commerce. It's two hundred thousand dollars over two tranches. Since this is a grant exceeding fifty thousand dollars, the federal treasury has a higher requirement. It requires additional information regarding proposed objectives, outcomes, number of people served. And also that detail needs to be included and outlined in the grant agreement. Council also provided direction for us to obtain financial reports. Work plans for the Spring twenty twenty-three Art and Wine Festival, explanation of use of funds. Chamber has submitted multiple incomplete ARPA grant applications and staff is continuing to work with the Chamber on key performance metrics. And deliverables. And as of yesterday, we did receive some updated information on upcoming events. Next slide, please. We'll conclude Economic Vitality with Workforce Development Program. Under this program. Council appropriated three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA fund in two tranches. The first tranche includes the five programs listed before you. First is the Milpitas Youth Force under Recreation, wherein forty thousand dollars was allocated this past summer. And we were able to employ nineteen Milpitas youths. So that was a great, successful program. Picture below there are two photos of the first five Santa Clara County event. Wherein with forty thousand dollars, they are launching early learning teacher apprenticeship programs. The Build a Green nonprofit is receiving ten thousand dollars to launch a certified green building professional certification program. The nonprofit Rising Sun Center for Opportunities is receiving ten thousand dollars to initiate the Greenhouse Calls Program. And also started conversations with public work to coordinate a clean climate careers. Um, externship program. Last but not least is the fifteen, that fifty thousand dollar allocation to the Evergreen Valley College. Uh, this was slated for the Amazon Cloud Practitioners Program with the vision that it would help Milpitas residents access cloud computing technology jobs. However, due to the departure of a key Evergreen College staff member, this program has been put on hold. Next slide, please. Moving on to the in- infrastructure investment area wherein we are allocating five million dollars. Next slide. Top of mind is our city parks. We have thirty-six city parks in the city of Milpitas. The funding of four point four million dollars will go towards thirteen, uh. Eleven of those parks for park playground rehab and twelve for park rehab itself. So let me explain a little bit about this program. Eleven of the parks have uh, safety concerns. Um, the improvements will be focused on fall zones and surfaces. Public Works and Recreation are working in concert to look at the design and park, desired park elements. Once that is done, the project bidding and construction is expected to begin in early July, uh, in early January. Or early part of twenty twenty-three. With the work expected to be completed by the end of the fiscal year, which is June of next year. On the parks rehabilitation side, there is three point three million. This will go towards twelve parks assessed to be in poor or critical condition. This first begins with park design. So the RFP for the park design has already gone out. It was published on September fourteenth. Um, we, uh, once that is done, we will then go into contract and conduct the design phase work. That is estimated to take up to twelve months. After the design phase work is done, construction will begin, which is anticipated to begin in late twenty twenty-three or early twenty twenty-four. So four point four million dollars will go towards uh, twenty-three of our parks. So that's very exciting. Next slide, please. Infrastructure investment also includes investments towards public safety. Infrastructure investment also includes investments towards public safety. As you could see here on this slide, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will go towards public safety facility rehab in the CIP Project Three Four Oh Three, specifically for the no-smoke apparatus. We'll do some housekeeping in the fiscal twenty-three mid-year report as noted in the agenda report. Also, which is really exciting and important is contributing towards the MEOC. MEOC stands for the Mobile Emergency Operations Center. Four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is going towards that. As you could see there in that illustration, it is an incident command unit for incident emergency response. The vehicle build is in process, twenty percent completed. We anticipate full delivery by the end of summer twenty twenty-three. Next slide please. Public safety investments totals two point five million dollars. Next slide. First off is public safety staffing with one point two million. That will fund for fire paramedic positions which are filled, two police officer positions which are under recruitment. It will also provide nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the fire pumper truck. That purchase has already been executed, fifty percent of it has been paid. The manufacturer is currently building the apparatus and so the order is in progress. Emergency Management Program Assessment Studies, there are going to be twenty reports or twenty assessments done, also known as annexes. Three of those are complete and seventeen of those annexes are expected to be completed by January of twenty twenty-three. So very important public safety investments there. Next slide please. Last but not least in the area of public safety is the investment towards catalytic converter. As we all are aware, catalytic converter theft is on the rise. Two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA program is going towards mitigating this public safety concern. Also to help automotive services that have been hit by the economic impact of COVID. This funding will go towards providing vouchers for members of the public and then those vouchers will then be used in local Milpitas automotive businesses to render the services. To date, we have developed and launched the online application for businesses. We have conducted the business outreach and as of tonight, we have, I believe, probably eight or nine, more than the seven businesses that have already signed up. So that's very exciting. Once the business online is set up and finalized, we will then also launch the outreach to the residents. We're anticipating that to begin fairly quickly in the later part of October. And so that will be in collaboration with the police department. Next slide please. Moving on to a technology investments. This is very, very important with two point one million dollars. Next slide. First of all is the Human Resources Information System, also known as HRIS with the one point one million dollar investment. The city as a service organization needs to ensure that we have a system that will aid us in our staffing, talent, professional development and a lot of other important aspects of labor management. Currently, we have an RFI, which is called, which stands for Request for Information. Once that is completed and we get the information back, it will inform us as to what companies, technology is out there in this space. That is anticipated to close on October fourteenth. After that, we will then launch an RFP for the acquisition of a new HRIS system. The financial management system, a hundred thousand dollars is slated for this. Assessment, the city has a legacy system that is twenty-six years old and in need of replacement. Replacement. This assessment will study our current practices and procedures, looks at opportunities and gap. As noted in the agenda report, we will do some minor housekeeping here in the mid-year report to swap out the funding to expedite some of the procurement. So a hundred thousand dollars is going towards the assessment of our current process procedures and financial system review. Cybersecurity, as many of us are aware and some of us are active victims of cybersecurity threats. The city as an enterprise and organization also is vulnerable and as such, three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA is funded towards training programs and cybersecurity programs to ensure that we can be robust in continuing to provide services to the city in this technology space. Last but not least, six hundred and ten thousand dollars of technology is being funded to buy in-user equipment such as laptops and desktops. We have already purchased the first year batch of in-user equipment. We are currently in the process of buying the second year of equipment for in-users and staff with this funding. Last slide please. This concludes my presentation. At this point, myself, city manager and department heads are ready to answer any questions and receive your direction. Thank you so much.
A wonderful presentation. Thank you so much, our Director of Finance, Lauren Lai. I want to thank all our city staff, the whole finance department, city manager's office, every department for their incredible work on ARPA. We we went through a one-hundred-year pandemic and this was an item that required great attention from everybody in City Hall in the city of Milpitas with so much uncertainty at the time of the pandemic. Our city staff, really every single person stood up and met the moment. And with deadlines and constant gathering of information, the work did not go unnoticed and I just want to say thank you trillion times to our city staff and our Director of Finance, Lauren Lai, for wrapping this all together and it really was done very well. And I'm thankful for that. We are just receiving an update tonight. There is no action. And so there are comments and these are my comments. I want to thank everybody in our city throughout the whole organization for their work. It was dire times in our lives and receiving this update tonight is for anybody watching here in the audience in person or on Zoom, you know, it didn't just happen. It didn't just happen that easily. But thanks to the great expertise and skills of our great professionals here at the city, it got done. And it got done while the city council took direction. I remember vividly all the meetings we had to allocate the funding, to make adjustments and amendments. And I applaud my colleagues. I applaud my colleagues for their work to increase funding for many of the projects such as the daycare item, Vice Mayor Montano, pushing that number north of what was originally proposed. And we have it all here on this presentation, the things that we as a city council and each individual elected official advocated for these items that were funded. So you know, I'm happy to be here today, looking back on those times where ARPA was this brand-new idea and you know, we see the funding really getting processed or going towards their conclusion based on their wonderful presentation. So let's go to public comment here. Public comment for item number fourteen, fourteen, Mr. Montemeyer, come on up. And I do have cards. You're next. Welcome.
Voltaire Montemeyer of Milpitas. Yes, it's really, I always mention the meticulous word for those figures. Did I hear trillion from federal, from the government down to six point seven? It's still very hard to divide the urgency and importance. I don't think there's a contingency there still. I mean, not yet. But in a way, yeah, even like, it's not simple, like catalytic converter. And small businesses to revive. Those are, we thank, we thank the ARPA. They really care. I mean, our government really cares. You know, it's us now. I believe I don't even suggest replenishment of the thing and accounting record. Everybody's trying to do their best for our city. Thank you and the government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Alex. Come on up. Got your card here. Welcome. Happy to have you here in City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Alex Caraballo and I would like to discuss the future workforce development in the city of Milpitas. I believe that an investment in local middle-class sustaining careers would be the best way to utilize the federal funds Milpitas was able to garner coming out of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. As many of you may know, electrical workers and our NICA partners have invested deeply in the city of Milpitas and plan to make our training center here in Milpitas the crown jewel of electrical education in the state of California for generations to come. Our program currently boasts almost six hundred apprentices with over a hundred and thirty members who are Milpitas residents. When identifying all of our worker classifications, fifty-six point three percent of the groups are minority represented and we currently have a hundred and seven women throughout our ranks in the trade and those numbers continue to grow every year. Our apprenticeship has thirty-two women who are getting new education that they had not previously had open to them and these careers provide a path to successful lives for so many. We've had impactful, we've made impactful changes in the lives of many of our members. We currently have twelve TOPS graduates. TOPS is the Trade Orientation Program, which is what we have here in Santa Clara County. And really what TOPS does is it creates a space for the most people with the most disadvantaged backgrounds and people who do not come from traditional construction backgrounds. We help formally get them in, get them trained and get them prepared for these future careers. We have, we've helped unhoused folks and as well as we really do a good job of reaching out and giving a hand up in the world to so many of these people that previously did not have it. A mentee and friend of mine who is now a second-year apprentice was unhoused and in food insecure most of her life. She joined the Army Reserves, which changed her life, but she still tells me to this day that getting into our workforce development program was the greatest thing that ever happened to her and her family. Our training facility would love to partner with the city of Milpitas for greater investment in the greener energy future and we want to be able to provide training to many more folks in our community. We are the power professionals which keep Silicon Valley online. And with the move towards electrification, I believe that we can create many opportunities for others, especially within our community to receive the training for the future of sustainable green economies. This body can create the change that we, that we need to make our dreams come to fruition. And I would just like to thank you as a local electrician and as an educator from the Electrical Training Alliance of Silicon Valley. Would really appreciate your guys' future support and making sure that we can create these really life-changing careers for so many folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, public comment on the Zoom. Looking for any virtual raised hands, seeing none. I think folks on the Zoom are here for item number seven, which was approved. Just want to squeeze that in there. Okay, let's bring the discussion back up to the dais. Councilmember Lanchua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. May I call on Assistant City Manager Ashwini, please? On the ADU, I know President Biden signed the ARPA Act on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Can you tell me the date on when we implemented this, this ADU, ADU grant? What is the cutoff date?
Thank you, Councilmember Chua for your question. I'm going to ask Chief Building Official Bill Todd, if he's available, to come on.
Yes, hi. Hello, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. March seventeenth was the launch of the, there's two programs actually, the ADU Initiative Program and the SAFE ADU Legalization Program. So both of these were funded to nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars for payment of any permits associated with the development and construction of ADUs. Or if you had a unit that you wanted to legalize, you were also included under that umbrella to have those fees paid for through ARPA funds.
So it's March seventeen is the start date, correct?
That's correct.
I just want to make clear because residents asked me, I said, what is the cutoff date? Because they were thinking like it's March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. I said, no, there is there are some guidelines in terms of the start date. Okay, that is good. Last time I asked for statistics, I was, it was mentioned to me that as of this year, we have a close to eighty ADUs, including safe legalization, I mean, participation in the safe legalization program. But today, there's only forty-three ADUs and thirteen permits. Is it because they were prior to March eleventh? I mean, March seventeen, twenty twenty-two?
Yes, and to speak to that, I know that we had some applicants who, for various reasons, for instance, this was prior to the effective date or the launch of these programs, but they were already in process and they approached us because of certain circumstances. For instance, they may have had construction loan that was coming due and they needed to proceed or they had a contractor who had deadlines and needed to start work. So prior to the actual launch, we accommodated some of those people in the sense of we allowed them to participate in the program. I know there were others that had started that participation, like say, November of twenty twenty-one. And unfortunately, they had gone through the whole process where they had paid all the fees and then the program launched and they were looking to have relief or have some, you know, money back. But you know, we didn't, there wasn't any, I'll say a trigger or some kind of an allowance built into the program, say for instance, to have six months prior to the launch to accommodate folks in some manner. And we also did have folks who had paid some fees. So the rest of the fees that had not been paid, of course, were taken up through the ARPA funding. So some of them came through with some of the fees paid, some not. So yes, a lot of those were prior to the launch. So we tried to be as accommodating as we felt was reasonable and responsible. And so that's where we ended up.
Thank you, Bill. That's really good. Ashwini, is there, is there flexibility? Because you'd seen the emails. We have a couple of emails asking for prior to the launching, the date launch of the ADU grants. Is there flexibility in terms of ARPA guidelines that we can do that? Like we can say like anything six months prior to March seventeen, we can accommodate? Will that, will ARPA allow that?
Councilmember Chua, I think we'd want to take that back and kind of look at if there's any constraints from the ARPA perspective because we have been reporting on these programs. Let us, you know, kind of take that back and bring some information back for you.
Awesome. That is great. I think that would encourage more, more ADUs in our city to help those that started before. I think it's good marketing and good initiatives for everyone, all the residents. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ashwini. Ashwini, I, on the on the catalytic converter, can I speak with, with, I think it's Alex?
There's several departments involved, Councilmember.
I know, it's very, it's very comprehensive. I know that. Alex, I am so glad to hear that you have at least seven plus shops that are interested, signed up for actually for the catalytic converter program. That is very encouraging. We were, at the beginning, we were Uh, program, that is very encouraging, we were, at the beginning, we were concerned like, oh, how many, how many? Um, how many of these uh, automotive shops would really sign up? So how many do we have so far today?
Look, me, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Montana and City Council Members, Alex Andrade, pleasure to be here in front of you. Uh, thank you for the inquiry, Councilmember Chua. I, I will go ahead and, and align to what Assistant City Manager Ashwini Kanta just mentioned. This is perhaps the ARPA project that is cross-departmental, so a lot of uh, key players here. Um, to them, and obviously your leadership and City Council. But to answer your question, we are up to eight automotive businesses that are registered as of today. And talking to our Economic Development Specialist Eddie Trung, who's here with us here today, and if you have uh, additional questions, he. He's the right person to talk to, he's done an amazing job. And we have a list of businesses if you're interested, and um, yeah, we're of the belief we can reach at least ten, so, so two more.
Oh, wow, that, that is great. That said, and I know you're asking, thank you, Alex, great job. I know, Ashwini, you're asking for, besides re- receiving the report, updated report on ARPA, you're also. Asking for direction to staff, correct?
Uh, that's correct, any feedback you have, um, you know, on any of the programs, we're happy to take that.
Okay, so my feedback is because the pilot curbside trash pickup program, the eighty-five thousand. Uh, that's already being covered by the new contract with Mel Peters sanitation. I would like to add that to the catalytic converter, if the council agrees. The rest of the council agrees, I would like to add that to, to the catalytic converter program. And also, there's a leftover four thousand nine hundred from the. Small Business Assistant Grant, I would like to add that as well. So that would be eighty-nine thousand nine hundred. Additional to the catalytic converter program, which is very, which is very. Which, which we need right away, I mean, soon. And that's my recommendation, I, I know you're just asking for direction, but that's where I'm coming from. Thank you. Thank you, Ashwini.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua, I did uh, just kind of a reminder that we were um. When we came to you last, we talked about sort of the process for some of the changes, uh, budget changes. And we had recommended, and I think council had approved kind of doing it as part of the budget process, so through the annual budget process, um. And also mid-year, uh, which is why actually as Director Li noted, there are a couple of budget adjustments we need to make. But we didn't propose doing that now, we, we would bring it back during mid-year. Uh, if this is a change that the whole council wants us to do, we're happy to take it back. But I just wanted to point out that we didn't bring any adjustment, any other adjustments forward with this report because of that process.
So when is the mid-year?
February, we come to you in February.
Okay, I think that would suffice. Because the program was, you know, the program will be going on, I, I hope, till then. And we can always repeat the program if we need to.
Uh, that's correct, and yeah, we'll have to see, I mean, we have eight signed up, we'll have to see how much demand there is. Um, you know, and if we need to make an adjustment, we can always bring it back.
And I just want to point out also, I just want to thank the staff for your leadership and Steve and, and Walter. I'm really happy with the way the ARPA funds are being um, distributed. We've seen a lot of good things out of it, you know, the grants, the parks. The ADUs, you can see the, the progress, the, you can really see it. The, this is one great thing for sixteen million point seven. Sixteen million, almost seventeen million dollars, we've done a lot, and there's a lot of work on this. And I really thank you so much to the executive team and the rest of the staff, it's amazing. How much we've done with almost seventeen million, thank you so much, courtes to everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Well said, uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Chua, next up, Councilmember Fan.
Um, yeah, I, I would love um, to get a status update. On um, the funding that we allocated to the Chamber of Commerce, I noticed that um. You know, it, it uh, still reads zero in terms of um, you know, funds um, spent. So um, what, what's the status on that?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Fan, I'll uh, kind of start off and then Alex and then um. Director Li may help as well. I'm sorry, I've been getting an echo. Hello? Okay.
You're, you're good.
Okay, okay, thank you, uh, Councilmembers, so um, if you uh, recall, the last time we discussed it, the. City Council provided direction for us to um, basically ask for some information regarding financial reports. As well as their detailed plan for the various events. Uh, so we went back and followed up with the chamber, we've been waiting for the information, we didn't have all the complete information. They sent us some additional information yesterday morning, and so we're looking through that. Uh, as soon as we have everything that the council requested, we'll send that, um, you know, information to council. And then we can have a discussion, well, as you know, Councilmember, uh, Council at two hundred thousand in two tranches. So we were supposed to do a hundred thousand dollar disbursement and then another hundred thousand next year. Um, so again, we'll send, once we have all of the information requested, we'll send that um, to the full council. And then um, come, agendize the item if needed, if there's questions. So at this point, we have not, um, again, we've not received all of the information requested.
Um, you know, I, I, I hate to say this, but I, I don't think you will be getting uh, the, the information you requested. At least um, you know, not to um, satisfactory uh, expectations. Um, you know, when, when, when we're, we're working with um, public dollars, it's, it's really important that we. Um, hold the, the, the folks that we allocated to, to a high standard. Uh, with clear uh, expectations uh, and, and, and a plan of action. Uh, that's what is expected of the residents, I don't uh, have confidence uh, in. Um, the, the chamber as it exists uh, currently. Um, in, in its ability to uh, meet um, the, the requests of the council um, direction. Um, I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, and I, I'd love to o- open that up for uh, discussion if, if you'd like to. Um, you know, time in there, uh, this is um, absolutely, uh, I understand it's uh, pertinent to the council's interests. Uh, but I think that um, that, you know, um, huge chunk of funding, two hundred thousand. Uh, can, can go towards um, a lot of other services. That we, we um, have been meaning to prioritize, but don't have a, at, an avenue to. Um, you know, we, we've uh, we've, we've mentioned um, affordable housing, we've mentioned uh, economic. Um, vitality, um, of course, um, Councilmember Chua, I think it's um, you know. Excellent, you know, that you, you, you bring up ADUs, we want to encourage people um, to. Uh, look into this as a um, you know, mode of housing. Um, and uh, to really streamline the process, make it easier, uh, and, and of course, really make it safer too. Uh, built to uh, the highest um, specifications and, and quality. I think one of the challenges that um, oftentimes um, is associated. Um, and, and one of the reasons why people end up with unpermitted ADUs is um. You know, they, they underestimate um, how the process is, right? And uh, the, the amount of work that um, can go into it, some of the costs. And end up with um, you know, uh, unskilled, um, you know, um. Workers working on the project, and then it can add up with the fees and, and whatnot, and so that's why we have like. Um, an inventory of uh, unpermitted ADUs, I think we can go uh, to um. You know, great progress if we have uh, a foundation um, for um. Skilled, um, you know, A- ADU production. And I, I, I think that's something that everyone on the council could um, you know, support, but at the end of the day, um. Something that was brought up, and I, I, I thought it was um. Uh, really innovative, um, wh- when, when you brought it up uh, in the last discussion, when we talked about the ARPA funding. That, that workforce um, education piece, right, that um, uh, training, getting uh, young people, job training. I think that's um, critical if we want to talk about uh, a thriving economy. Um, and, and so uh, last time when, when we brought it up, I think uh, you and I were on the same page there. Um, where we mentioned that, you know, three hundred thousand um, is great for workforce development, but. Um, you know, we can do so much more, you know, more partnerships, more um, initiatives, more um. Value to the community and, and touch into all these other um, areas that we, we care about, you know, um. With, with, with increased funding for, for that uh, effort, so uh, that said. Um, you know, I want to open the floor up to my colleagues uh, for their, for their thoughts on this.
Well, there's not much we can do tonight, thank you very much, Councilmember. Um, not much we can do tonight, and so uh, we're just receiving the report, and, and so I'm just going to go ahead and receive it. Uh, as is, uh, with the chamber uh, considered. Uh, in the way uh, it's being discussed, so I'm not requesting any action, just receiving the report tonight. Uh, I'm number fourteen, but I appreciate your effort, Councilmember Fan. Any further comments? Okay, we're receiving the report, we took public comment. Uh, I'll look to my colleagues again, if there's any further comment, I just want to thank staff, I mean. We, we, you know, we've been through a lot, I'm trying not to talk too much right now, but I get emotional when it comes to. Um, how everybody came together for our city, city staff. Um, it's easy to be the mayor when you have an incredible organization, and. You know, I, I talk to the city manager every week routinely. And I always express how important and how important our organization is, and, and I really do mean it. Um. The realities of our world are uh, very difficult and in recent years unpredictable. Uh, but it is this o- organization that really absorbs bends, never breaks when it comes to whatever the world may throw at us. Um, which is not always dreamy, um, things happen in this town that are. Um. Just very heartbreaking, uh, and every department that deals with whatever they have to, uh, they do it very well. And um, just to bring our background to the ARPA, you know, I think. Our organization, every department leader, director, manager, uh, everybody just um. Did their job very well here, and uh, for that, I'm thankful because I know that's not given. There are cities out there with organizations that fail. That make. Big mistakes. And, and that's not us, because uh, I know everybody comes here and gets to work and takes pride in their work. And like I said before, uh, everybody met the moment, and so thank you for this update. I really appreciate everybody so much, uh, Councilor Fan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I, I don't think we uh, necessarily have, have to decide uh, what to do with the, the. Uh, funding immediately right now, but I do think it would be helpful for um, uh, staff. At least for forward uh, planning, um. If uh, if, if, if we uh, uh, gave some direction, um, and for, for me. Um, I, I for one would like to um, move um, to um. Take away um, the funding that was allocated. Um, or um, the, the chamber, um. And, and we um, can, can decide what to do, we want to do with it, um, you know. In future discussions, at the very least, uh, if we can have uh, some consensus on that. Uh, and, and if it's the case that they, they uh, come and present uh, a good case to move forward with that. Um, you know, i- initial plan, uh, you know, so we, we, you know, can consider um. Uh, sticking to the original goal, um, but I think that they, they should work for it. Um, and the fact that to this day, we haven't uh, received the information that uh, was asked. It, it was, it's disrespectful to uh, the work of, of our organization, it's disrespectful to the council. Um, and, and we, we, we need to hold uh, folks accountable here, so um, that's, that's my request.
I decline your request, um, any further comment? Okay. Any further comments, any requests, let me know. Okay, not seeing any, not hearing any, um, but you know, Councilmember, the opportunity uh. Uh, for your recommendation, uh, can have another day. Can have another day, it's still very much possible. Um, for you to explore your recommendation going forward, so. Uh, don't consider the book closed. Okay, once again, I want to bring it back to our city staff, uh, the real MVPs. Uh, you know, this is a ARPA, everybody can be proud of uh, in their careers. Definitely uh, something you can put on your LinkedIn, uh, or your resume. Uh, you know, it's an incredible piece of work and a highlight of everybody's career, and not for the right, or the best reasons, but. Um, you know. Um, just very proud of everybody, thank you so much, and that's it for item number fourteen. Uh, thank you, everybody, that's it for tonight, this is a record. Uh, meeting uh, length, and I'll go ahead and adjourn it. Been here a while.